Alrighty then, we have a forum here for the regular meeting of the Economic Development Advisory Board. To call this meeting to order, it's January twenty fifth, twenty twenty three at three oh three P M. On let's, so just high level, we have Chris here, Strategic Development Director for Grand County, he's going to give us a quick overview on some legislation that we're aware of that would threaten the economic diversification programming, get any questions to Chris from the board? And then we have a large slate applicants who have generously taken some time out of their day to apply and interview for the Economic Development Board. Same set of questions for everybody, we have three who are already interviewed and several more who are here today, same questions for every candidate. And then the board will go through and consider the applicants that we have and make the nomination of candidates for the board vacancies. Do some housekeeping, go over bylaws, go over the meeting schedule, and then for whatever we have time for at the back end, have some discussion of programming moving forward, given the legislation that we'll be discussing, talk a little bit about the Grand Summit on and update on an award to receive from the Royal County Communities Opportunity Grant. If we can quickly start with introductions, let's go around the table and then we'll go online. Let's just do board members and then, and then we'll, all of the applicants will introduce themselves in the detail. I'm economic development director for Grand County. Ben?
Ben Alter, economic development specialist. Chris Barrett, Strategic Development Director.
Emily Campbell, Grand County, and official member.
Brad Bertasch, retired angel investor, economic development specialist, professional for years gone by.
Melissa Starks, Assistant Marketing Director, Economic Development.
Forrest Rogers from the Moab Museum, board member.
Rob Walker, Chair of Moab Community Childcare. And still a board member, this is my lap. Let's go online, Jasmine, do you want to go first here on my top left?
Jasmine Duncan, Mayor of County Castle Valley, board member.
Kelly.
Kelly Thornton, I'm the Department of Workforce Services.
Karen?
Karen Guzman Newton, citizen board member.
Harley.
Harley Castle, City Manager for the City of Moab and Exeptio Board Member.
Alisa.
Alisa Martin, Grand County Planning Director and Exeptio Board Member.
Kevin?
Kevin Walker, Grand County Commissioner, Mayor McGann could not make it today, so I'm substituting for her.
Thanks Kevin, Rachel?
She cannot talk.
Okay, Rachel is our admin in our staff who's doing minutes and managing the meeting, and then I believe that's Vega? I'm assuming it's Vega, she's up at Sundance with the film commission in our office.
Oh, the M P.
Yeah.
Yep, that's me, Vega Messner, Film Commissioner, bye.
Okay, are there any conflicts of interest disclosures or exportation communication that need to be shared by board members? Hearing none, are there any citizens to be heard? Hearing none, we'll move on to our presentation from Chris, if you want to take it away.
Let me just send the message real quick to somebody calling me.
Okay.
Okay, so in twenty twenty one, we worked with Representative Albright to pass some TRT legislation. There's two main components to that legislation. The first is to increase the split that goes towards impact mitigation by ten percent. And that would include, you know, being able to use that money for law enforcement, search and rescue, solid ways, the museum also use a little bit for funding Thompson wires, emergency services. The other component that was authorized is also the ability to expend some TRT for economic diversification activities, and that's defined the state code as activities that are reasonably similar to state economic development programs or Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity Programs. The impact mitigation split, you know, at this point in time represents between eight hundred and thirty thousand and eight hundred and eighty thousand, kind of depends on how much TRT grows this year. The diversification programs hovering around a million dollars, so Representative Lyman indicated recently that he was interested in running a bill to repeal that that bill that Albright sponsored and got passed. And so obviously that had a potential significant implications on Grand County's budget. You know, the loss of eight hundred and thirty to eight hundred and eighty thousand this year for impact mitigation would be pretty significant. We'd have to, you know, figure out what to do about that budget wise. We wouldn't be able to reclaim the money anyway this year. It's possible, you know, that we'd have to do a property tax increase to reclaim some of or all of that funding, which is very unfortunate if that were to happen. The other component, you know, is the diversification program would would essentially disappear and the we would, you know, fall back to the funding that we received from the state of Utah, the rural county grant program, maybe some bear funds, that kind of stuff, but it'd be a substantial reduction in the economic diversification programming. And so I have been in discussions with Representative Lyman, you know, he hasn't drafted the bill yet, he's in the process of drafting the bills, we don't know exactly what it's going to look like, whether it be a repeal or some type of amendment, that's a partial repeal. At this point, I indicated that what he's hearing is that there's, you know, something wrong with the grant program, which is his justification for running at least the reveal on the diversification component. I haven't heard any direct complaints about the program that, you know, and we've received some feedback that Ben solicited via survey, but nothing, you know, that would indicate somebody was so upset with the program that they would attempt to get it entirely canceled. And so at this point, I'm not entirely sure why this is happening. There's been a lot of politics involved also. But, you know, we're, the commission voted to, you know, oppose any legislation that would amend or detrimentally amend or repeal the bill from twenty twenty one. And so we're actively kind of working at this point on lobbying to try to maintain that funding in those programs. But, you know, we don't know what we're against yet because the the bill hasn't been enrolled, the language is still being drafted and considered. And so that's the update I have, obviously, if that happens, it would be a big change, you know, to what you folks are involved with, significant reduction in the budget responsibilities of, you know, what we have to offer. But, you know, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, but in the meantime, you know, we're working to try to figure out what the concerns are, hopefully try to, you know, figure out who's got the concerns and get a meeting together with them, see if we can talk it out, see if we can figure out, you know, a constructive solution to the issue, that's where we're at. Are there any questions about that?
Yeah, what's going to be, I mean, it appears that Representative Lyman's got a burrowed saddle for something. It's this, the way that bill got changed sounds like one of his oxes got bored, okay, something's happened.
And he voted for the bill, everybody did, it was unanimous decision in the House.
So I don't know why he's doing what he's doing, there's something that didn't work out. But it appears to me that you have a, you have a good alignment of economic development and representatives in the other communities, like looking at, you know, Kane County, Wayne County, et cetera, et cetera, Washington County. That is there any plan to get together as a group and sort of lobby that this doesn't happen?
Well, we're, there's a, an association of counties that we're a member of, all twenty nine counties are a member of, and so we'll say, you know, I can believe that Mary McGann's already brought it up to the revenue and taxation committee. And, and so we'll probably be working via those avenues, the sheriff's been working in the Sheriff's Association, you know, from that angle. And so we are, you know, coordinating the the split, the increased appropriation for impact mitigation would apply to any fourth, fifth, or sixth class county that has a national park or a national recreation area in it. And so that's several counties within Representative Lyman's district, then including us. The economic diversification activities however, sort of a pilot program that applies to Grand County and it already has a sunset date at the end of twenty twenty six, or the repeal if not reauthorized. So it's already somewhat slated, you know, to to go away if it's not reauthorized, and so this five year period was, you know, our opportunity to prove that that it works, that it's effective. But, you know, it feels like there's some discordment about the program, which is, you know, difficult to address, we don't know exactly what the, what the issue is, nobody's come to us directly to discuss it.
What's the status of the audit of Grand County and San Juan County that's going to be completed after the legislatures?
Yeah, well, I called the audit manager.
Again, why is that? That's sound.
There's only, I mean, the only, I guess, probable cause related to Grand County that was identified when they launched the audit was the former county attorney had sold a house to some issues actively prosecuting.
Oh, really?
Okay, and that's the only probable cause related to Grand County that
sold a house from someone she was prosecuting.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, got that backwards. So that, that's the only thing that was stated, but, you know, I Representative Lyman indicated that he felt like there's potentially NGO infiltration of county government and that the Grand County government was somehow potentially involved in meddling in the politics of San Juan County. So I did ask the audit manager if he'd seen any evidence of that thus far, and he said no. But they really can't, they're not going to release any kind of official report or statement until after they're done with their investigation.
And I know he's very concerned about the the thing that came where the federal government was looking at shutting down certain aspects of the B L N land for tourism things, which was an interesting thing that they were going to do, shut down about twenty percent, the biggest one was shutting down about twenty percent of the or Jeep Safari goes, right, and and then shut it all out back into the rest of
All right, yeah.
And I don't know what the status of that is, because we're the four recommendations, the four plans, and has that moved forward and is there a plan that's maybe got him really thinking that somebody here pushed the long agenda?
Yeah, he hasn't brought that up, and when I spoke to him recently, he kind of said that at this point, it's all boiling down to, you know, some antipathy with the grant program, but I'm not, again, he didn't really expound on it what that that was, but that's kind of what it's boiling down to in the most recent conversation I had with it.
If he was willing to say that it's based on this antipathy for the grant program, then you would think that he would be able to say more detail on it in terms of this, it's coming from, it's, you know, who it came from, how many complaints there were, was it some of they want to redirect the money more towards traditional tourism promotion, that feels like they should be spending more money that way? Because I was trying to think what could be a motive, but why not? I mean, would he not be receptive to expanding on that?
Politics.
He's telling you the direction, yeah, it's just seem like, I have to say, well, why won't you, who is he? If he wanted to not say that, he would just make up some other reason, you would think, and not say your complaints, but.
Yeah, and I mean, I think that, you know, I think the best that I could do is ask him to contact whoever they are and and see if they're willing to.
Would it make any sense for private citizens to contact him?
At some point, probably, I mean, if the bill gets enrolled, then, you know, I think it would be, you know, that obviously things would be getting serious that we don't know what a bill would look like yet. And so I think that if Bill gets enrolled, then it goes to committee, you know, obviously contacting Representative Lyman and the the committee that it would go to, the members of the legislative committee that it would go to, it'd probably go to Revenue and Taxation. And so, you know, reaching out to those folks, and I have to emphasize, you know, cordially and politely, when you, when you discuss things with legislators, you know, it doesn't help to get mad at them, it doesn't help to insult them or anything like that, but, you know, respectfully, you know, expressing, expressing our concerns, you know, and our desires to maintain the programming.
That's what I was wondering, there was a concerted lobbying effort that was being put together by the fourth, fifth, and sixth classes to take a look at that, and I mean, there may be some legitimate concerns. As far as I can tell, what we've done in terms of spending TRT money in Grand County has been, you know, most worthwhile and definitely, and the diversification grants. Although we've taken a sort of a concentrated approach to focusing on a couple of areas, I believe that we had a major impact. And the smaller grants that we've done, as listed in your, or the thing we got today, shows how that money has been used and how it was used when everything flooded. And I find that could be, I would be, you know, as an individual, I'd be happy, right, I support a letter at the phone call and say, because I don't, maybe there's somebody else that's done something that's inappropriate, okay?
Karen, you had your hand raised?
I do, so Chris, it sounds like the issue is with the one million diversification portion of the ten percent, is that correct?
No, so the ten percent is, there's, so I guess I'll have to explain the, how the TRT laws work in Grand County a little more. So there's, when it hits us, it kind of goes in two main directions, so there's the impact mitigation side, and that heads off to upsetting law enforcement and all those others that I previously mentioned. Then there's the the other side, which is the economic development side, so that's where we fund tourism promotion, recreation, film commission, and and the diversification program. And so it would be on that economic development side that would be getting hit, the ten percent is unrelated to the economic development money, but if, you know, if there were, if there were a repeal, it'd be likely that the impact mitigation would roll back into tourism promotion. And same with the diversification program money, so we'd still get the same total now, transit room tax, but it
But it'd be all for tourism.
We would be considerably constrained in how we spend it.
Well, so we cannot be the only tourist economy that is concerned about the the offsets of mitigation funds, correct?
Yes, yeah, correct, and it seems to me like, you know, that part of it might be the easiest part to sort of either talk him out of or defeat. The diversification component, like I said, however, only is only authorized in Grand County right now.
Right.
And that was a, that was the result of, you know, my negotiations with Utah Tourism Industry Association and the hotel lobby or Hotel and Lodging Industry Association, you know, they didn't want that program to really spread or to be pervasive across the state, and so, you know, and part of my negotiation with them in twenty twenty one to get the bill passed, you know, we zeroed it in on Grand County, set a sunset date, so it's like a pilot program, like sort of exploratory bit of legislation.
Yeah, and I understand that, and is Albright, is he in support of of us continuing with the the option with our, with our increases, moving from tourism solely? I mean, like the tourism promotion?
Well, he hasn't commented directly to us. Representative Lyman indicated that he had talked to him and he seemed okay with repealing it, and I think in part due to Representative Albright's dissatisfaction with how we've handled U T V issues. So there's politics going all over in every which direction here.
So, but who's, who's working on the commission, I mean, he's our representative, is somebody in discussions with Albright?
He's not a representative anymore.
He's, yeah, I mean, he's not, we only have Representative Lyman now since the redistricting happened, so Albright doesn't present us anymore, but yeah, I mean, we're certainly, you know, I've got, we've got a lobbyist as well that's working on it and in discussions, you know, with several state legislators who are involved right now.
You know, Karen and Rob and Brad have been using the term issues, and Lyman has been very vague about the issues. He's called about carveouts for Grand County, separating Karen County from treatment for others, you just identified the interests at play, which are the hotel and restaurant and lodging industry and the response to our use, our response to O H Vs and U T Vs. Those are, those must be where the pressure points to which he's responding, why? Otherwise, he just doesn't like Grand County and Brad and Rob and Karen and Forrest, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I think that, again, I think, you know, we need to be careful with how we interpret intentions at this point, you know, especially, you know, when we speak to them in this context, and so I think that, you know, I'm going to keep working with Representative Lyman, and again, I'll keep pushing for, you know, a meeting with whoever has concerns, so that we can have a constructive conversation about it.
If you have any more questions, I want to limit this to maybe the next five minutes, just so we can respect the time of our applicants who are here. But any other questions for Chris on kind of substance or or strategy or or anything else related to this matter? I'm just to clarify, you just said a minute ago that if this were to change, that it wouldn't affect the things like like does, like Sheriff Department and things, but in the articles I read, it sounded like they would, so is that the articles were wrong or?
It would affect, I mean, so this is
Because I think being able to say that is pretty powerful. It's pretty powerful to say like, you know, you're going to be, if you want to kind of, if you're upset with this year, then you're also taking out these like other services.
Yeah, it would have a definitely a major impact on our ability to fund essential services, especially, you know, law enforcement, search and rescue, solid ways, you know, it's say at the museum. And so that's, you know, where the money's authorized to be, to be directed, and so there's a variety of different ways to deal with that, you know, property tax increases one, we could also just start moving off our savings essentially, which would, you know, be a financially insolvent situation and, you know, carve away at the money we saved up for stormwater infrastructure and all these other public infrastructure needs that we have. But the only alternative to that, you know, would be a proper property tax increase to regain the revenue so that we're not, you know, in an insolvent situation.
I guess I just don't understand the numbers because, well, I mean, I don't understand them because it sounded like what you're saying was what's at stake is eight hundred and thirty eight or eighty thousand dollars. Right?
Yeah.
So the grant program last year was a million, and then this year it's going to be five hundred thousand.
You're confusing the two, to the two sides, so the one side, the impact mitigation side would, this year would be about eight hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and eighty, so that's the impact mitigation side, to what we, what we'd lose.
Yeah, for this new legislation.
For law enforcement and search and rescue and all those others, then there's the other side of it, which is the diversification program, which is about a million.
Oh, so you lose both of those flexibilities.
And also as additional context, the grant program was originally budgeted as five hundred thousand, it was not our entire diversification budget, and then we pulled another five hundred thousand from reserves. So that's why the grant program was a million, but it wasn't our entire diversification budget for last year either.
So it's more than ten percent overall of TRT then, that's at stake for, that got moved around, or like twenty percent?
Yeah, I mean, it's complicated, so the way that the statute reads right now, the diversification program cannot expend more than one third of thirty seven percent.
It's about a million dollars.
Yeah. So, you know, we're, we're estimating to get between about eight hundred or eight point three and eight point eight million this year total in TRT, so, you know, you can derive the percentages off that, you know, ten percent is obviously eight hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and eighty, and then a million, you know, would be whatever, so about one, between one eighth and one ninth of the total funding.
Okay, well.
But, you know, and I think that it's, it's yet to be determined, you know, how it's going to be redirected, we want to know until we see the draft.
Well, thanks for your work on this and your, I'm sure your calm demeanor about this is appreciated up there, it's probably the right move, I agree.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, you know, I keep trying, I think, you know, you all done a good job, you know, I reviewed the program, I reviewed the whole process. And I really don't see any obvious failures in the process itself, you know, we've got a diverse selection committee, we've got scoring criteria, objective scoring criteria, all the documentation for the rationale for who got and so I really don't see that there's any failure in the process or the way that the grant program was established, I do think that, as, you know, if this diversification allocation survives this legislative session, that it's time to really move into some other economic development strategies, we'd like to create a revolving loan fund, you know, I think one of the values of that is even if, you know, the the legislation isn't reauthorized at the end of twenty twenty six, we have a revolving loan fund, then we have a, it's almost like an endowment, you know, it's, it can carry on into the future. And so, you know, we probably assess, or, you know, have a an interest rate that's just sufficient to cover the administrative costs, so that the program doesn't evaporate over time, just do administrative overhead. But, you know, a revolving loan fund could persist indefinitely into the future, you know, without additional funding. We also made a commitment last year to partner with USU, S B D C Utah for a Small Business Research Development Center housed up at the university, and this funding is what, you know, we would use for that agreement, and so if we lost that, we'd have to terminate probably that contract, and I think that Small Business Resource Development Centers, you know, viability would be seriously in jeopardy.
And then just a random idea, offering a seat on the new, the new, new Star Grant Committee. And a little name on it.
Chris, I know it's moving target, but have you heard any whispers to suggest when you might get a draft?
No. Representative Lyman did indicate it's not a priority bill for him. But I know that he's got his drafting attorney working on it as we speak.
Cool, well, with that at three thirty, I think I'd like to move into to to applicant, interviews with our applicants.
Thanks, Chris. Yeah, thanks, guys.
Yeah. Right. So we have already, so we're going to move to discussion action items, interviews for Economic Development Advisory Board positions that expired on December thirty first, twenty twenty two. So those two positions on are a private sector representative, which currently filled by Brad Bertasch and member of the public that lives in Grand County, currently filled by Rob Walker, as those positions haven't been filled yet, they are still filled by Brad and Rob. According to our bylaws, obviously, they are eligible to continue to be board members voting today. On we've already interviewed Brad as well as Brittany Mountain and Chris Wilson. And we have following candidates who have submitted their application in alphabetical order, first name on, starting with Candace Eddy, I don't see Candace here, is Candace online? She withdrew, okay, cool. Okay, let's go from there, Carolyn is here today, if you want to come up, we'll start with you. And then we'll just go down the list, Alisa, Michael, Shailie, and Steve, it'll be the same questions for everybody. Thank you for being here, all right, I will go full screen. All right, can you tell us a little bit about yourself and what is your background?
Sure, hi, my name is Carolyn Conant, and I've lived in LA for five years, I was here for four years working for the Hour Bound School, that's down in Silicon Valley now, and then left to go to grad school for a few years and then returned about a year ago. I work in energy efficiency and affordable housing, and, yeah, and involved in a few other community initiatives in Moab, skate Moab with Jasmine, and the new Moab Aortion and Reproductive Rights Network. uh, Skate Moab with Jasmine, um, and the new, uh, Mob Abortion and Reproductive Rights Network. Um, and I'm just a big fan of all the other nonprofits in town and all the community events that we've got going on. And, uh, since, since I moved back last year, was looking for other ways to get involved and, um, help create the kind of community that found me a part of.
Awesome. Uh, and what is your understanding of this here Economic Development Advisory Board?
Um, I understand it to be a board made up of community members and, uh, subject matter experts that help to inform the work that the county is doing to promote, uh, the economic well-being of, um, Grand County residents.
Awesome. And what do you hope to bring to the Economic Development Advisory Board? And what are you hoping to gain from your potential involvement on the board?
Um, I'm hoping to bring first and foremost, I think, um, my experiences as a community member and somebody who, like many others in Moab, kind of, um, moved here and fell in love with it in my early twenties and then was kind of really struggling to to find a way to stay and make it work for me because of limited economic opportunity and availability of career options in the fields that I was interested in, um, working in and contributing to society through. Um, so, yeah, I want to bring that that perspective and the perspectives of others in their twenties and thirties who are kind of facing similar things, but really wanting to, um, stay and and make Moab a long-term home for themselves. Um, I've got some background in local government work. I worked for three years, uh, in Colorado for local government on environmental sustainability and was working alongside others in the department who focused on economic health and, uh, social sustainability. And really think that those, that kind of, uh, triple bottom line approaches and an integrated approach to thinking about environmental, social, and economic well-being are, um, is a really important lens to approach this work through. So I think I would bring, um, kind of that, that three-tiered approach, um, to sharing my perspectives as a member of the advisory committee. Um, and also I currently work for a nationwide nonprofit that supports local governments in, um, implementing workforce development and economic inclusion policies as they relate to scaling up energy efficiency efforts, um, in housing and across other sectors like transportation and industry. So I have, um, I'm really lucky to kind of have access to a lot of workforce development experts nationwide and would be excited to bring, um, some of that experience to this role as well.
Cool. Um, and what do you hope, excuse me, I said that question already. Within the context of economic development in general and economic diversification in particular, what do you think are some of Moab and Grand County's best assets and attributes? And on the flip side, biggest challenges, obstacles?
Um, yeah, I think some of the biggest assets, um, the community is the first one that comes to mind. I just think it's a really special and unique group of people who have so much resilience and passion and such a diverse set of, um, backgrounds and experiences and maybe just a lack of platforms to exercise those skills through or kind of put them to work for the benefit of the broader community. Um, obviously, our, our beautiful, beautiful land that we're lucky enough to live on is a huge asset as well and one that already plays a big role in the economic well-being of Grand County residents. Um, and at the same time is a challenge too. We're seeing, um, you know, the impacts on our resources and, um, recreation opportunity becoming more crowded as well and more strained, especially the impacts of the pandemic. So that, that kind of matching the pace of the growth of tourism and and recreation tourism is one of the main challenges. And then I think also just that challenge of, um, diversifying opportunities. How can we attract different types of economic opportunities that potentially provide, um, more economic stability for workers and different types of career pathways and, um, more full-time jobs with benefits and things that enable people to stay and thrive and and have healthy, happy families?
Awesome. Uh, and then lastly, are you prepared to serve as an officer on the advisory board if nominated? Is there anything in your schedule that would not permit you to attend board meetings the Wednesday following fourth Tuesday of the month? And any special meetings that may be called for any of you?
Uh, I don't think so.
Have you been? Thank you so much. Um, that's all the questions we have. Thank you. Go to the next, go to the next ones.
You tell them how it's all the same for everybody.
Yep, it's all the same questions. Yes, we want to follow questions.
Otherwise, I think that was weird if I was that.
Yeah, for the sake of fairness, we're not doing follow-up questions. Same questions for every person. Uh, next up, we have Melissa. Okay, um, let's start from the top. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself? Um, what is your background?
I can't. So I will try to keep it relevant to this group in short. Um, I'm a Southern gal and from a really, really, really rural community in Tennessee. So born and raised in the sticks, but I am wearing shoes in deference to this group today. Um, I ended up coming to. Ended up, uh, coming to Utah to go to undergrad and grad school, came to law school at the University of Utah here and stayed and became a local and made local little people. And when those local little people were up and out, my husband and I relocated here full-time to Moab. And we always came and played. I think that that's a really familiar story in this area. So we brought them here growing up. And when we weren't tied to school and other things, here we came. So we've been here full-time for just under three years. And my professional background is, um, corporate strategy. So I've held, you know, positions in private sector, in startups, in publicly traded, really large corporations. I've been an EVP at two separate publicly traded one and a half billion dollar plus organizations, and that's kind of where I found my sweet spot and what I love doing. And my role in those organizations was all around revenue, so strategic revenue. And kind of for me, it was street groups. So organic, how do we grow it organically? I've been a part of A and M teams about how do we grow it through acquisition? But then my sweet spot, kind of my gift and my passion is around new value creation. So how do we take the pieces and parts that we have, the limitations and challenges that are keeping us from getting those things and create new things within the organization by putting them together to pursue new revenue opportunities? So that's kind of my sweet spot and what I love and what I do.
Awesome. Thanks so much. Um, and what is your understanding of the Economic Development Advisory Board?
Okay, so my understanding is that as part of the rural community grant program, one of the state legislative mandates is that we have this board in place to be able to apply for those grants. So that kind of creates a bifurcated role of that board, which is one part being liaison with, uh, the rural grant program and being able to work with them and making recommendations or, you know, being a support system to the county commissioners. And then the other part of that is just sort of general economic development. So how do we help assist your team, the economic development team? And then how do we also look at things like diversification and hit the general economic development challenges?
Awesome. And, uh, what do you hope to bring to the Economic Development Advisory Board? And what are you hoping to gain from your potential involvement on the board?
So what I would hope to give, because I'm kind of an all-purpose tool, so I'm zoom in, zoom out for sure. I've written successful grants to be able to get state funds. I've, you know, all the way up to corporate strategy. We're looking at what do we want as a community? What kind of economy? Because all economic development is not created equally. Full transparency, I'm a huge fan of regenerative economics. I don't love the idea of extractive economic development, you know, come here and, you know, we have great educated people and they're more cost-effective than you're going to find somewhere else coming from a rural coal mining community that didn't fare really well under that kind of economic development, you know, I'm kind of the other camp. And I would like to be able to take the values of this community and what it is that we want to accomplish and what we would like to develop in terms of economic growth and be able to hit those challenges and say, okay, what do we have? What do we not have? What are the restrictions and the limitation? What kind of growth do we want? And then apply my private sector background to be able to come up with some solutions and, you know, so all the way from zooming out in strategy to all the way down to, let me help you write a grant, let's come up with what the benchmarks are, how are we going to measure? And how are we going to track successful measurement and shuffle papers and also run errands if that's necessary?
And within the context of economic development in general and economic diversification in particular, what do you think are some of Moab and Grand County's best assets and attributes? Um, and on the flip side, biggest challenges or obstacles?
That's tough because I think they're all sort of intertwined and they kind of do this really unique dance together. But I think in terms of assets, to me, it's the landscape. I mean, you don't have to sell it. People want to come here. Sometimes it's difficult to control the flow in a way that's manageable to get them here. But it's amazing. We've got two national parks. We've got, you know, amazing landscapes. I think in addition to the landscape, though, because of location, I would also say one of the assets is resiliency and flexibility. Because to be able to go from our uranium boom and bust and then to create its own tourism culture before the state of Utah started focusing on, focusing on how do we build that tourism culture? Hey, we're going to figure out how to run hospitality businesses in a food desert where we're far away from all of the things that we need access to. There's a lot of resiliency in the business community here in terms of small business. There's a lot of stamina. Um, I think that's a huge asset. I think in terms of challenges, I look at it as all the different forms of diversification. So expanding seasonality in the one area that we have already that kind of comes in a little bit easier. Diversification in terms of jobs that are available within all of those sectors so that we don't brain drain and we're not losing best and brightest talent that is educated and trained, and then they feel like they have to go somewhere else so that their assets can be utilized, which I think is really tough. And then I think diversification in terms of things that aren't dependent on tourism, because as we saw in COVID, it's really vulnerable. So to me, I guess my answers would be diversification, diversification, and diversification, but both horizontally and vertically.
Awesome. And then are you prepared to serve as an officer of the advisory board if nominated? Is there anything in your schedule that would not permit you to attend board meetings the Wednesday following the Thursday of the month? And any special meetings that may be called for any of you?
I would love to and no conflicts.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Melissa.
Thanks, guys.
Uh, and next up, we have Michael. Are you done?
Good, how are you?
I'm well.
Hi, everybody. Hi, Emily, Forrest, Karen.
All right, let's hop right into it. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself? What is your background?
Okay, my name is Michael List. Um, I've been in and out of Moab since nineteen ninety seven. Um, let me think. That's a big question. Um, education-wise, I have a BS in economics from the Wharton School of the University of Pennsylvania. So on this topic, you can't have a better undergraduate economic education. Um, I've worked in a lot of different industries. I worked at Procter and Gamble out of college. I worked at Kiran Beer. Um, I trained as a chef, as an architect, but relevant to this group, I was the managing director of a company called Butterfield and Rollins. And we're a luxury adventure outfitter, offering biking and walking trips around the world, and I did that for ten years. And recently, we were rated the number one tour operator in the world by Travel Leisure Magazine. Okay, so what I did was, I turned a small company into a worldwide company where we set up these biking trips and walking trips all around the world. Okay? So not only did we have to set up the trip, but we had to make sure we had the infrastructure to make it happen in both developed and developing countries. Like, are one of our biggest countries was France, and we had to explain to these beautiful chateau hotels that only got people coming by car to have these Michelin three-star meals that our people want to have a light lunch when they come because they're biking. So we had to train French people how to serve what is new Val cuisine. To Nepal, where we would set up a way that our people could hike, yet they didn't want to camp. So we had to work with lodging companies to create like hut-to-hut. What, what we were doing was hut-to-hut, which is now a category. And we established what now is experiential travel, but didn't have a name then. Okay, which I think is really important because this is an economy based on nature and based on people hiking and biking and rock climbing and rafting and all of these different things. And our job is to make sure the infrastructure is there so that that kind of vacation can happen. So that's some experience. And, oh, um, I served on the Travel Council like twenty years ago. And during that time, I would say that my biggest accomplishment was we hired R and R partners as our ad agency. They did what happens in Vegas stays in Vegas. Okay, so if you look through your files, there's a beautiful brochure that they did. That's all we did with them. Um, and then I was the chair of the Moab Transit Authority Study Committee. And, um, we had an amazing committee. You were on it, but not really. Um, pushing company meetings, but it's okay. Um, and we accomplished the laws. Um, because of the committee, um, the regional transportation plan was initiated. And out of our committee came the idea that they picked up for, um, for frontage roads and one ninety one. We also, our main goal was to have public transportation. That's why we formed it. And now that's one of the initiatives with the ten million dollars from UDOT. So that's really exciting that that happened. We were also talking about dispersed parking, and now an example of that is sitting right outside the door. And I think what I learned on that committee was there's a lot of talent in this town. And when you bring together, like, really smart people, and then you focus on an issue that we're all concerned about, we're going to get incredible answers, credible. I mean, from the Travel Council to the Transit Committee, those are some of my best friends in Moab still twenty years later. So there's two things to being on one of these committees. As you guys know, it's the actual work and then the people you get to meet.
Well, that's, that's a perfect segue. Next question, well, I guess, question after the next question, but what is, what is first, what is your understanding of the Economic Development Advisory Board?
What's my understanding of the economic development? Well, there's two parts to it. If you read the bylaws, um, state, um, statute requires the board for the rural county grant program. So that's part of it. But then when you read the other part, it's to advise the county on economic diversification, which is huge. And I think I can play a big role in that because, I mean, you guys talk about diversity and inclusion a lot. And as a gay man, like, I'm the only gay person in the room. And I see that everywhere I go. So personally, when you live in a town where everyone's straight, everyone's white, everyone looks the same, talks the same, acts the same, dressed the same, like, I bring a different perspective just by being alive every morning. Okay? And that's not how it's always been. I'm a New Yorker and a Los Angeles person, so this is very new for me. So, I mean, I hear a lot of talk about diversity and inclusion and a lot of pronouns. But if you really want to include people, you got to include them in the conversation. And I don't think we've done a good job of that from my perspective.
Um, so with that, the other question is, what do you hope to bring to the Economic Development Advisory Board? And what are you hoping to gain from your potential involvement on the board?
Um, what, say it again?
Yeah, so what are you, what are you hoping to bring to the board? Um, and what are you hoping to gain from being involved with the board, which you kind of touched on already, but.
Okay, okay. So Moab's like at a crossroads, okay? I mean, you brought it up, which is very smart. I mean, when you really understand the history of the town, we had a little tiny town, there's mainly ranching, originally providing beef to the coal, to the miners in Colorado and then providing fresh fruit to, um, you know, when the train started, you could then transport the fruit. And then we had the uranium boom, and the town was dead. And then, and I know the people, then people in this town, um, worked really hard to create a tourism economy. I mean, they worked really hard. It wasn't a sure thing, was not a sure thing. Okay? And, um, and they were very successful. Okay? And it started from the very beginning. The entrance to Arches National Park was on Willis Springs and Salt Valley. Okay? It was the people promoting the town that said, can we bring an entrance closer to the town to foster economic development in the town? And by the way, this is the nineteen fifties, okay? And Arches at that point is a monument, and it's not even a national park. Okay? And I've spoken to Senator Hinckins about this, and he's like, yeah, if they had kept the other road today, Green River would be the Moab, and it wouldn't be Moab at all. So, I mean, we have a really fragile thing because an economy is like a person or a culture or a civilization. Okay? It's always evolving. It's always growing, and it's either going to grow or it's going to die and and you're getting a lot. And you're getting a lot of forces in the county that are like, oh, we don't like it. We don't like tourism. We don't like this. We don't like that. Okay? Well, I'm not the kind of person who comes on to any public job. Thinking what I don't like. Okay? If I don't like something, I'm going to come up with a ton of solutions. Okay? That's the kind of person I am. Okay, so we have a problem. I haven't focused on this. I mean, I want to get on the board to focus on it. But we need to look at it and come up with solutions. Okay? Right now. Especially as a gay person and a Jewish person, I don't want people telling me I can't walk there. I can't drive there. I can't fly there. I can't play my back fight. I mean, this is outrageous. Okay? And that's what's happening. And anyone who's been a minority or is a minority, they don't want to hear that. They don't want you telling me how to live my life. Okay? So. What you need to do instead is say, what do we have? And how can you actually make something better that makes everybody happy? I don't know the answers because I haven't focused on it specifically, but. If you look at this economy. I mean, we have the natural wonders. Okay, so that's number one. Okay? And then so what are we going to do to get more people here or get different kinds of businesses? That have different time periods of operation and different kinds of staffing and higher paid. Those are really important questions and it's a national issue. Okay? I mean, if you look at the flight of companies from Silicon Valley, right? Where are they going? They're going to Texas and Florida. So why? Why are they going? Why are they leaving California and why are they going to Texas and why are they going to Florida? I mean, we need to really think about it that way. Could we? Are there any outside companies that we'd want to bring here and for what reason? Why would they even want to come? But then as important, like there's a lot of people starting small businesses here. Okay, I meet them all the time, all the time. But you know what? If you had a small business selling anything, selling soap, selling whatever Moab made has, you can go look. There's only Moab made to sell it. Okay? We don't have, we don't have the infrastructure to have retail stores. Literally, the amount of retail in this town. Is almost non-existent. If you want to do a new, a new business. Okay? So how are we gonna, how can we work together to say, I want to start a business, this person? How can we put all the pieces in line to? Make it easy and possible for you to start that business? Like that would be amazing because I don't think we necessarily have to look out of the town for this economic diversification. I think there's so much happening in the town. I mean, the community I'm most involved in is the spiritual community, which by the way, doesn't get involved in politics at all. So you guys don't even know. But um, so much is happening in that community. Yet they don't even have, we don't even have enough spaces for those kinds of activities to happen. I mean, Helena's doing it with the help of her. And me personally, I actually have a real estate project. I have the um, largest development parcel in the county. Okay, and I'm going to use about a third of it for a bike park. Okay? And why am I going to do that? Because. Like, why do these kids grow up in ski towns and they become ski champions? Okay? For the longest time, kids grew up here and they couldn't become bike champions. By the way, this year, the team did win, so that's amazing. But if you talk to the coaches, there's the skills part that got practically washed away like two thirds of it. So I'm going to have a skills part and the main goal is to create mountain biking champions. Because then you're taking something that is big for us, mountain biking in nature. And if we can get something to happen where a young person not only succeeds nationally or internationally, but then can come back and they could have a career. In some bike related field, like I'm going to do that personally, but it's an example of what we can think of as a county because that's. One small area, albeit a large one, because mountain bike, we're the mountain biking capital of, of the US. Not to go on forever, but what's interesting about that, I was just in Bentonville, Arkansas. Okay? And I went there on the way to Thanksgiving. During COVID, actually, I did road trips to thirty US states. Okay? So you think everyone just came here and we saw more license plates than any other time in the history of this? Town? Well, I was in all those other places. So I go to Bentonville, Arkansas, and I should show you the brochures. I brought them back. They're calling themselves the mountain biking capital of the world. I don't think so. Okay? But there's an example of a town that's really thinking about, you know, town in the middle of the Appalachians. Not a lot going for it, except all the Walmart money and they're on, and they're really doing something incredible. Really, I was so impressed. Great coffee shop, a Frank Lloyd Wright house, totally made the trip. Did I answer this question? But I didn't, what was the second part?
Well, I think, I think you got the bad question. We have one more question.
Okay.
Uh, and then I think I want to make sure that we have, let's wrap this up by four. So this is the last kind of substantive question.
Oh, so now I'm being limited.
Well, we just want to make sure. Within the context of economic development in general and then economic diversification in particular, I think you, you know, touched on this in many, in many ways. What do you think are some of Moab and Grand County's best assets and attributes and on the flip side, biggest challenges or obstacles?
Okay. Um. Well, the main thing we have is the landscape. And probably everyone in the room came here at some point and discovered Moab because of the landscape. I was on a road trip in my twenties and I rolled in here and here I am. Um. In terms of the economy, the biggest, the biggest challenge is the workforce. We don't have any employees. Like if you run a hotel or a restaurant, where are you going to get an employee? And by the way, this is where you have to be strategic because. You, here's an example of a problem that the government creates and we can't let this happen. You guys created a trail ambassador program. Okay? And while that may have merits on its own, what you've now done is you've, you're, you're competing with the private sector with actual jobs that need to be fulfilled. To service the tourists and you're offering like twenty, twenty-two dollars an hour. Okay? So I have friends who own bike shops and they're like, how can I keep a bike mechanic at my bike shop? When I'm paying them less, when they can hang out on the trail for twenty or twenty-two dollars? So. Even when we think about how the government can help, and there's a million ways you have all these grants. You, you have to realize that. We, we have very limited resources here in terms of human resources, economic resources. Infrastructure, real estate resources to actually create this economy. And if the government's going to compete with the private sector, then we're creating another problem. So there's. On the flip side, the main thing is this is an incredible place. There's nowhere like it in the world. Moab, Utah. Most people hadn't have heard of it and then if they do hear of it, they think it's cool. And by the way, the cool factor has nothing to do with the tourism promotion that we've done for fifty years. There's just something cool about it. Maybe because the name comes from the Bible and it's related to the Sodom and Gomorrah, like who knows? But there's something cool about the word and it's unique. So. What did I miss?
I think, I think you answered it.
Okay.
Uh, the last question is, are you prepared to serve as an officer of the advisory board if nominated? And is there anything in your schedule that would not permit you to attend board meetings the Wednesday following the fourth Tuesday of the month? And any special meetings that they just called for any.
I don't understand why you bring in the Tuesday and the Thursday, but that's a whole nother question. Um, yeah, I don't have a. I don't have a schedule in my life. I don't even know if it's Saturday or Monday. Um, and by the way, my main job is I'm the steward of a two thousand acre mesa. Okay? I've experienced everything. I speak to everyone that comes to my land where they're walking, running, walking their dog, riding their UTV, riding their horse. Parking. I've seen everything. I've seen people throwing garbage. I've seen new trails. I've seen people cutting my trees down. I've seen people creating fires and camping where they shouldn't. Okay? Like I'm aware of everything and I'm trying to manage this one little thing.
So that's a yes, Michael? It's a yes, you can.
That's a yes, I can make all the meetings. Yes.
That's all the questions we have.
I would really like to do this. Be amazing. You have my a hundred percent capacities if I get on.
Okay. See, who is next here? And then I think Lisa posted a question in the chat. Yes, the next action item is. Consideration and nominate nomination of applicants to fill vacancies. So after we're done with the interviews. Will be, the board will be considering. Who they would like. Uh, Shailly.
You're up to it.
I talk a lot, but.
You're up to it.
Michael is a very good.
Ready, ready when you.
Well, I first just want to say I'm like super impressed with who we have applying for these seats and. About the involvement. There are so many board openings in the town. If you guys want less, we need more people willing to get involved.
A little blood for another.
I'm just saying, we need help as a town.
Um, so the first question is, tell us a little bit about yourself and what.
So my name is Shailly Bryant. I run Edward Jones Office just down the street. Uh, I am also the vice president of Chamber currently. I'm lived here five years and on the chamber board for four. Um, I'm also on. Two, um, right now, but honestly, I love every part of it. So. Um, but I am on the budget advisory board for the county. I'm on the Bobby Sodden's board. I am on council for aging. I am also on um, the airport advisory board. Not just for me, it's a lot about I want to make a difference in this town. Um. I haven't been here all that long and what I've seen, uh, I was also on the STAR grant. Advisory, whatever that committee. Uh, so I was very involved in this, this portion of. Our county last year. And so that definitely is very interesting having more involvement in the long term.
What's your understanding of Vietnam?
So for me, uh, when I was part of that committee and, and really being a part of the chamber and dealing closely with you guys. Of really being able to see like where there's some gaps in our county. Um, and one thing is approving grants and we're looking at it and being able to see like what. Our very, very intelligent county and the members in it have to offer. And what they want to do and the lack of employees, the lack of space, the lack of, of financial capability to start those businesses. You know, to actually see that, I mean, part of it. And hear people's stories. We, yes, employees are an issue. Housing is an issue. You, you know that that's pretty much on the docket in front of everybody. For me, hearing these is like, okay, we were talking about sustainability. Now sustainability of can they last a year? We had some two local businesses recently closed. They were a store company, a store, or sorry, clothing company and a gift company that were started by locals. For locals and they went under in a year because nobody shot. And to me, that's like, okay, so is retail really what we need? Um, one of the big things that we focused on in that committee was is there any manufacturing businesses or any people that want to come and diversify our economy? And that's what I feel like gets missed sometimes in this board and not having a balance. And that is like, yes, no, tourism is our bread and butter. I will support that all day long. I have a job. Because my clients are in the tourism business through and through. There's one of me, there's only what, three CPAs really in town? Like just the diversifying of those areas is so necessary and so helpful in finding those areas in our economy that can be served. How do we, how do we attract that? How do we attract families here of saying, okay, it's not just about. The tourism business. I know that's our bread and butter. I will support that all day long. I don't want to change that. But we have to have other things to support those business owners. Our school systems are part of our economic diversification. How do we keep? Those smart seniors that graduate high school from leaving town because they can't find a good job. They can't find good housing because. The jobs that we have are low. If you want to work in the tourism industry, there is more here than that. It just kind of gets covered by our bread and butter.
Um, and what do you hope to bring yourself to the economic advisory board? Where are you hoping to gain from?
My mouth be talk a lot in a kind way and respectful way, but for me, what I hope to bring to it is I. I don't go with the status quo. I'm always going to bring up the other side. I'm going to have those difficult conversations, not because I necessarily agree with the other side, but because I think it's important to look at both sides. Have multiple perspectives. I also hope by being on this board that we can have a really good communication between us and the business community as being on the board of the chamber. So for me, I do think there's some disconnect, even though we've had a great relationship, sometimes it's just we only get so much from each other. You only know so much from us. We only know so much from you guys. And so being able to create that link and that liaison can be vital to diversifying that.
Uh, within the context of economic development in general and economic diversification in particular. What do you think are some of Moab and Grand County's best assets and attributes? And what do you think are some of the biggest challenges?
Honestly, I think our assets are our people, uh, who can find a way. To show them that they're assets. We do have smart, intelligent people. I mean, there's a lot of people that want to be involved and you want to help. And I think a lot of times they just don't know where to start. They feel shut down. They feel like there's not a lot of good avenues for them to get involved. Uh, so I think that is, is one, one thing that we just are. We need to utilize the people that we already have here. You know, in a more effective way. Um, some, some opportunities, I feel like. Some things that we can do better is just figure out how to support the tourism industry, support those employees, support their children, support their families. How many business owners that are making a lot of money in tourism need financial planning? Need their taxes done, need better grocery stores, need to be able to buy clothes without driving an hour and a half to, to Grand Junction. Like, oh my gosh, somehow like my kids have no underwear. I have to go to Walmart. Those kinds of things and asking those questions, I think are some of the biggest.
Uh, lastly, are you prepared to serve as an officer of the advisory board if nominated? Is there anything in your schedule that would not permit you to attend board meetings the Wednesday following the fourth Tuesday of the month?
Yes, I'm more than one.
Thank you, Shailly.
Thank you.
Right, last interviewer, interviewees, excuse me, speaker. You ready?
Sure.
Right, I. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
So I'm a farm kid who went to college. I believe town because it wasn't the jobs being chemist. Environmental chemist. Started several businesses. The first one was air testing in the basement. So kind of went through the startup and it's out of management. But I had two environmental businesses. Mr. Lab was the most successful with twenty-two employees. Twelve thousand foot warehouse, modeled in the map. With a bunch of people wearing white coats pushing machines that cost more than the house. That's what it used to do. Also helping life in a big shop and a pop with mom. Uh, down in the basement, we'll keep the family store called Trent's. Funnest business I've had, most expensive apartment. Cost me more than any of them. Um, my last business was. First retirement plan. Was visiting down. With me. The entrance to, to North End there. It wasn't a boat. So lots of land, zone change, started a whole school. So we had a little bit of ride.
And what is your understanding of the economic?
So I went and read your bylaws, the region ones. Even four different areas of focus that. Couple of them were interesting to me. And the other one that was really interesting was. We were talking even back in. Twenty sixteen, developing nodes, excuse nodes around the bomb. I've been exposed to that before in fourteen one. It's a really good deal. And there's some issues we're going to have to deal with.
Um, and what do you hope to bring to the economic development advisory board?
So to bring to the committee of the board. A background in chemistry and. Really good researcher. I love this. You want to know what our community is doing, seeing the problems? And then the other thing I learned early in my business is starting out small with autonomy. Is you have to learn to solve the customers' problems. Is you have to learn to solve the customers' problems. So I was able to kind of think outside the box. Figure out solutions that you all the lab itself was able to figure out. So it was successful. So when I was running, we worked on a couple ideas.
Um, within the context of economic development in general and economic diversification in particular, uh, what do you think are some of Moab and Grand County's best assets and attributes? What do you think are some of the biggest challenges?
Well, like everyone said, our locations could be sweet. And if you want to think about different kinds of economies of the tourism. The hot desert can be a real asset. Those seed companies around the world are trying to research different varieties of seeds. And maybe with former clinics. And with Utah State here, we can add everything. We could, we could hook up with their research and animal sciences. Set up some facilities down here. We would offer the distant farmers opportunities to maybe bring the more profitable type crops than just raising hay. And then another opportunity. And I see that we should tell you about because it's kind of a crazy idea. But have you guys been following the state prison being moved? The old sites being redeveloped into basically a road. Self continuing type stuff. I see an opportunity right now because of the military. It's crazy. What if you took that area around the room? Built a new arena over there across the river, better for so is newer. And then the county take that land and make that first move. It's one of the few spots that you can connect Spanish Valley and it's mostly undeveloped land. It's got infrastructure. You could do something you've been talking about. Eight, ten years. Trying to find a site. So that's kind of weird. Thing I hope to get from the committee is, they say I grew up on a ranch, they did five kids. It was adult and cheap. Borrowed the tuition. And also the saddest property of the raise with his kids because he realized his five kids. Majority of us were going to leave the farm. That three out of five would stay. Because it was never. So I lived in of generations of local students have no choices.
Uh, last question, are you prepared to serve as an officer of the advisory board if nominated? Is there anything in your schedule that would not prevent you from attending board meetings on Thursday, fourth Tuesday of the month?
Just for real, I think that they do this. Some short answers.
Thank you. Okay, that's all of our interviews. Um. We will move to, on the next action item, which is consideration and nomination about the economic development. Advisory board positions expired both thirty-one and twenty-two. Yeah.
And you want to do it?
So, um, I guess I'll provide some context first, which is that the vacant positions is, is A, a private sector representative. On, and B, a member of the, lives in Grand County. Um. Brad is reapplying to this position, but also, um, doesn't necessarily, you know, if the board wants it. But you could also fill in a public position. Uh, and then, um. We would have to figure out. I think almost all of these folks represent a private sector backgrounds. But basically, we, one private sector, one member of the public that lives in Grand County up to the board to figure out exactly how to fill those two requirements on, but uh, Roberts will apply so. Motion separate discussion. Go from there. The only thing I noticed Brad for the bylaws is still a member and could, but I would probably hope that it um, so I would, I would probably think about each individual position. Their, you know. And then, right, and maybe who are the voting members?
Our voting is originally distinct for Brad, Forrest, Karen, Lee, and Lacy. Missing Dennis and Lacy.
Kelly, you raise your hand?
Yeah, for, I was actually just going to ask how many voting members there are because I, I didn't sit through the first three interviews, so I'm feeling a little nervous about that. And then I couldn't hear what Ben said. The sound was kind of garbled.
Um, yeah, you guys, that, for some reason, the sound has just gotten really bad. I don't know what's happened.
Can, okay, good one. Um, can you hear us already?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Yep.
Okay, may, maybe I'll.
So just in a little more detail, um, I could hear most people fine, but it was a little bit hard to understand Steve.
Okay.
So I don't know if the position in the room makes a difference.
Okay, maybe it's just enunciating very clearly.
Sing out, Louis.
Yeah.
Okay, so the voting members in attendance are Brad, Forrest, Karen, Kelly, and Rob. And we are missing Dennis and Lacey, who are also voting members.
Sure. Can we, I don't, I don't know what the rule is here. I feel like we should have a slight discussion uh, before we just start making motions to leave on the board. Is there, can we do that? We have like a closed session thing?
Yeah, it's, it's a discussion and action item, so.
We cannot move into a closed session.
No, but we feel free to discuss for any motions remain.
We can't move into a closed session, but can we invite or excuse the applicants?
It's a public meeting, so if they want to leave, they can leave, but they are totally more than welcome to stay here. I, I wouldn't have anybody to leave.
Yeah, I, I also just. Well, I love the idea of having our board filled. If folks that have missed interviews want to get caught up, we have recordings. And, you know, this can also be postponed.
It's a possibility for sure. We don't have to make decisions today, but that means that we wouldn't be filled by the next.
Yes.
Yeah, of the five member, voting members, it sounds like, I mean, is it just Kelly who didn't, uh, catch the other applicants? Anyone else?
People on boards often vote in nominations even when they're up to be, you know, to reapply.
But yeah, I'd open the floor for discussion.
You sound personally to vote twice for myself.
Well, why don't, why don't, uh, you know, it might be, might be a good idea since there's so many people here that have paid attention that don't get a technical vote on this. Why don't they, um, express some, some like, try to, try to sway, sway the, the five of us who are clearly superior that are even given a vote? In this weird board.
So can I just clarify, everyone but me saw the entire range of interviews, correct? Okay. So you don't necessarily need me.
But we need you, Kelly.
Doubtful.
A lot of really good applicants, so it's kind of like, what do we want to prioritize?
Um. So I was, I was going to answer Rob's, um, invitation. I, I did not see the first three interviews, so I'm, I'm not going to name any names. Um, but I, I did notice for the interviews, I did hear that, um, some people put more emphasis on the diversification than others. And I, you know, my understanding is that a, a big chunk of the mandate of this board is to, so, is diversification, which really means things other than tourism. In Moab, and while I think, you know, developing the tourism industry or striving for diversity within the tourism industry, those are really important things that we ought to be doing. I don't, I think this board probably should have some emphasis on, you know, th- things, things other than tourism. So that, that certainly doesn't narrow it down that much, but it might, you know, lead one to look at some of the applicants more than others. So that's my only comment.
I, I think probably a good way to proceed in general discussion is if there's, from all members voting or not, um, there's particular applicants that stood out for any particular reason. Um, you know, discussing that, I don't think we need to. Uh, I think that the, those who, that, that will just start a good discussion, I suppose. Is where I would start. Is this nor, is it normal to, uh, vote like this in like a public meeting?
Totally is, and it is in fact probably.
I would assume it'd be some like, you know, email you'd get where you voted privately.
Open public meeting laws. Apply.
I found in serving on boards, the actual vote being somewhat anonymous and by paper ballot is a more comfortable way of expressing an opinion, but as far as nominations, yeah.
Yeah, well, and then I should be clear that, that ultimately the county commission is the final deciding authority on this. And so all of the, basically in order to be, to qualify, the applicant has to have applied via our, our application process. Completed an interview and not be, um, kind of ineligible for any other reason to have to be resident of the county, for example, stuff like that. So this is a guidance to the county commission. County, the commission will look at every applicant on here and will ultimately be the final decider that this board makes a nomination. Does that make sense? So it's not, here's the, here's the nomination of just the two. Don't look at anybody else.
Right, right. So they could change.
They could change. It's, the commission is the final deciding authority on this. They appoint, they appoint this board. So this is simply a recommendation.
Well, you know, this is, I think kind of on a public meeting, I mean, could we have them all put their hands over their ears?
I, I think that it is, it is as uncomfortable as it is, and that's life.
There's so many opportunities to volunteer and I think, you know, it's always hard to make a decision amongst qualified candidates. I mean, as a non-voting member, what I would just say from my own observations is, um, you know, expertise is, um, i- is, is highly valuable. You know, people who have expertise objectively looking at the variety of issues that would come before this board, to me seems like the priority, especially with regards to the need to diversify. There are many opportunities to solicit opinions for people to participate and make sure that different parts of the community are heard, but I would, um, I think we have some very qualified applicants that represent deep domain expertise. Um, which, which is great. I also would just say there's a variety of people representing sort of different demographic groups here. Um, certainly balancing, you know, ages of demographic across the spectrum, as well as that business owner versus more, um, sort of, uh, not necessarily private sector, a couple of people that are maybe on the edge. Just as citizen, I'd love to see that sort of balance be somewhat maintained.
I just think it's encouraging.
It's a good problem to have.
We just got an email from Elisa who had to drop out. She is weighing in on this. Is in the email? Yes. Yeah, so Elisa wrote that she had to drop out. She's very sorry. Well, I don't, you know, it's perfect to read out and say, I don't actually have emotion. This is what she had sent us. So. Uh, I think, I think she, you can share, sure.
Share what she wrote?
Sure. So Elisa wrote to me that for a private sector representative, she is in favor of seeing Melissa or Chris take the role and for a citizen who resides in the county, she's in favor of seeing Carolyn or Chris take the role. Is it, what about, um, should we consider trying to do some kind of like ranked voting where we like, is that not, that's not what we should do, where people like?
Well, I mean, you can do whatever process you want. It's the motion that matters ultimately.
Yeah, sure.
So if you like, if we want to do some kind of process, if we want to like write things down on paper and, and
Okay.
and put it on a spreadsheet, you can do any of those things, um, in the context of discussion. But ultimately it's the motion and process that seals the deal. So we could do whatever we want.
So August, we are not able to email you with our, with our, um, choices and then and, and then.
Well, we have Stephen, County Attorney, he's probably the best person to answer these questions.
So, so for the discussions, I, I'd recommend focusing on positive things. Um, these are open discussions are very difficult, they're very uncomfortable, but with an open meeting act, we have to make the decisions and the deliberations public. Um, if there were things that caused concern, administration, uh, has left it to the county commission to go into closed session on issues. So again, it's a recommendation that comes from this board that we recommend these three or these however many applicants. And then that goes to the commission. It has to be done public. It's awkward. It's uncomfortable. Um, if there are things that you don't feel comfortable saying, that's why I say focus on the positive things about the individuals and, and make the discussions. It's a very difficult conversation to have, but it's a public one and it's public deliberation. It's an open meeting. Everybody's invited to come, listen. That's what makes your guys' decision and power and your recommendation exceptionally difficult. That was the only thing I wanted to add.
Thanks, Stephen.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm ready to, ready to say some things.
Say some things, Rob.
Um, I would say, you know, um, I think Chris is the only one that is the actual, I, I mean, well, we have, we have Hussein on the board. But I'm thinking of like, who's like an active, small business owner in the day to day, and I have done it in the past, or I think there's something to be said for, for that. Um, I mean, this is Economic Development Advisory Board. So we've mentioned word diversification a lot today, but that is not in our name, you know, it's, and it's part of, part of it. To me, I, I'd always thought this board is economic development and diversification is a part of that. Um, so I like the idea of having someone who's, you know, who's actually on the grounds, running a small business, and he also has a lot of policy experience, so, um. Yeah, I feel like, to me, seems like, um, I think I could make a motion for that perhaps, um. Yeah, I'll, I'll do that. I'll make a motion for Chris.
Okay, so what is, what is your motion? Because they're.
I'm motion for the private sector representative.
Okay. Do I have a second for that motion?
I made a second.
Uh, any discussion?
I, I think Rob makes a really good point, um, about Chris's background, um, which is both business and policy, which is a combination that is typically part of everything related to economic development and or diversification.
Cool. Any, any other discussion on that motion?
Chris was also one that stuck out in my mind from the interviews, so. Non-voting member.
Something that I, I now would say with Chris, um, that I was impressed with, I mean, especially since he has, um, international experience is that realizing what our assets are in our community. Um, and trying to build on that. And so, uh, I don't know that it's diversification, but it's, it's, um, definitely economic development that seemed like he had a strong interest in, so. I was also impressed with, with his, his interview.
I, I didn't see the interview, but I like the idea of a small business owner on, on the group, so.
Uh, any other discussion before I, uh, ask for a vote? Uh, hearing none, uh, all in favor of, uh, nominating Chris Wilson to be a private sector representative on the economic development board? Kelly, are you abstaining?
I am going to abstain, abstain unless you have a.
Okay, Brad, are you abstaining? Okay, so that's three in favor, two abstaining. Uh, Rob, Forrest, Karen in favor, Kelly and Brad abstaining. Motion passes. Uh, okay, so then, uh, a member of the public that lives in Grand County that we still need to nominate a, uh, application applicant for.
This can be interpreted, uh, you know, theoretically two ways, right? In that, um, member of the public is, you know, still by, still by me currently, you know, as I don't, I mean, now I work, I don't get paid for it. Um, like the, it's more of the, like, should it, is it important to have this role be a like someone who's not employed, you know, like, I mean, I thought Brad could only be eligible for this one, not the private sector, because you're not really working in the private sector right now. I mean, theoretically, I think that'd be the interpretation. So I mean, I don't know if anybody, to me, it seems like, uh, I don't see a reason why it needs to be someone who like. I, I don't see a reason why it needs to be someone who like isn't currently employed or something, or I don't know if anyone wants to talk about what the point of that, like, you know, classification of person was and whether we need to think about that.
It's about as open, yeah, basically anybody who lives in County.
Yeah, you see the terminology across some other boards. I think it's to just.
Yeah, I think the only reason, the only reason that there's a distinction between private sector and member of the public within the bylaws, which we'll discuss in a moment is that, uh, we had discussions with chamber to make sure that there was at least several private sector representatives who were you know, actual private sector representatives, but not necessarily. There was also discussion saying this, well, member of the public has to be something. It was more member of the public is catchall, representative of the community at large. But making sure that our private sector representatives are representatives of the private sector, if that makes sense.
I think, I think a piece of that is also not a government representative, because the other required representatives are weighed pretty heavily on government types like myself. And I think private sector, I think that's a protection of, of people who are out there in private business.
Can I make a motion?
You may.
Um, I would like to make a motion to, uh, to nominate Michael this. And, um, I could give some background. I, I have worked with Michael, um, on the transit committee that he formed and, um,
Let's get a second.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Do I have a second on that motion? Just because we should do discussion after a second.
Second, second.
Don't hear a second, but you could still, in the context of discussion, uh, discuss Michael's qualifications.
Um, yes, so. I, I, I really enjoy being around people who push, um, my thresholds and or my assumptions. And, uh, he's really good at that, uh, in, in a, in a positive way. Like there's always a perspective that I have not thought about or a solution, um, that he has that he has come up with that is pretty, um, ingenious. And so, and he de- devotes so much time to what he puts his mind to. So, um, just serving with him in the past, it, I was very, very impressed. Uh, he talks a lot. But you can, if you can, if you can, you know, keep him under the timeframe, it's good, but that's, that's where I was at.
No, appreciated, but we, we, I didn't hear a second unless somebody wants to make that second. Then we don't have a motion. Thanks, Karen.
You bet.
Anyone else? It's a weird game we're playing here.
It's a weird one. Yeah. Now, I know, personally know Carolyn, and I, I think she would be great at this board. I also felt the interview with, is it Melissa?
Uh, Melissa.
Melissa today also, and of course Brad has been a great member of this group as well. So those, you know, as a non-voting member, those are the, the three I would rack my brain over.
Um, so I just, we've sometimes faced similar dilemmas back when I was on the planning commission and, um, one of the things we did then was just have people fill out slips of paper with either a ranked list or just, you know, members they would find acceptable. And then those can be tallied up in public. And then, you know, once someone has a lot of names, um, you know, then you can make a motion for that. But, um, you know, if people are feeling shy about saying what their preferences are, that's one way to, to get over that shyness and just figure out where the consensus is.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you just consider straw poll, um.
Yeah, yeah, I was saying that earlier. I, I feel like that we can, we can probably knock this out. Here, I, I have a question for, for everyone. Uh, so some people that stood out for me, people I don't know at all are, are Melissa and Carolyn, uh, and Shaylee, um, from the interviews today. So I don't know if anyone has worked with them. I mean, my, you know, Shaylee is, seems overcommitted by probably a normal stretch of what that would be. Um, but you know, that's not necessarily a negative. Some, some people are, do a lot more than other people, I've noticed. Um, throughout life. Anyone have any comments on beyond the, the comment that Jasmine made about Carolyn in terms of like, uh, working with those other two? I'm just curious.
I, I'd say, I, Shaylee's great, and we already have Lacey from the chamber as a board member. So that might be a bit over-representation from the chamber, which is the only thing I'd counsel on, uh, which is not anything to say, you know, regarding her, her personal fall patients.
Is Lacey's role like, uh, actually for Lacey or is it just for the chamber?
It's for the chamber. They could appoint.
So they could, they could move that around. I think. That kinda, kinda gets me. Sorry Shaylee.
I think Mike, uh, did a good point. I mean, talking about diversification, he's using his room. I'm the only lucky woman here. And he bring that he's gay. I mean, we need someone who has, um, coming with another mentality, with another, I mean, I don't know, I'm came from another country, have another way how to see that thing. Maybe he has another way how to see that thing. I mean, that's, that's the name of that, this board diversification. What is the diversification here in this room?
I, so I think one question.
Second up for, for Stephen.
Is, um, that, that notion of like a straw poll, um, is that something, um, where, cause so, so far we've, we've heard support for Melissa, Carolyn, Brad, Shaylee and Michael for this remaining position. Yeah, it becomes harder when you've got the mix of members being online and you're trying not to create quorum. If you are all in the same room, you could, some, some paper exists, right?
Sure.
But the second you start emailing, you're going to be triggering quorum. And then you're going to be having deliberations on a specific item. That's where it gets tricky. If you're in the same room, people write down notes and talk to each other and interact. That's the difficulty where you have some members electric and some in person. So the kind of the awkward thing, and we've seen this in a commission meeting where, you know, maybe Commissioner Walker would, would say to Commissioner McGann and say, hey, I, I'd be supportive of this person, this person, and you kind of have to kind of feel out the individual members. So you could say, you know, uh, Karen, where, where are your people? What, who would you consider? And then kind of go down the line and you can kind of jot notes and say, hey, look, we've got favor for these people. Otherwise, you're kind of stabbing in the dark, or you'll have somebody throw out a motion and say, I motion for this person. We have a second. And then you have crickets and then you kind of just go down the list. Yeah, well, I'm wondering, would, would, uh, would like messages in the chat be considered part of the? If it's, I think that, I think your chat is, uh, if the whole thing is recorded, then yeah, you'd be golden there. That'd be, that'd be covered. So, but again, it's not, again, if the idea is trying to not do it publicly, publicly, I think. Well, I think, I think rather than voting preferences, it's just of, I think if every, if everyone kind of put out of those five, who they would support. Right. Um. And then there's another funky wrinkle. So in the, in the bylaws, I was just glancing at them. You guys have seven voting members.
Yeah.
Is my understanding.
Correct.
And it states in the bylaws that your votes, they have to be a majority of the voting members. So you may need four, cause you have seven, a simple majority of the voting members. So you may need four. So on your previous vote, you have three, which would normally pass, but you need the majority of the voting members. So I glanced at that and that's maybe something that you guys want to.
Yeah.
If, if.
Sorry for headaches.
No, it's fine. If, yeah, if, if that means that our, that previous vote, basically, no, we can. So.
So I can un-abstain if you'd like, un-abstain.
Not, it's not my preference. I'm just saying that's what the bylaws say.
No, I'm.
Members.
Because I didn't see the, the, all the interviews, I really don't want to be a deciding vote, but there are three others who who feel strongly, I'm okay with changing my vote to yay on that one.
Okay.
Do we have to go back or something, or can we just make a change?
It would be cleanest to call for a motion again and re-vote on it. That way there's no confusion. Okay. Uh, I'd entertain a motion to nominate Chris Wilson to represent the private sector on the economic development advisory board.
I so moved.
Awesome. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, all in favor? Uh, Karen, Rob, Kelly and Forrest, uh, vote affirmatively.
I'm saying.
Brad abstains.
How about, um, motion, Carrie? And yeah, um, and the answer is to try to move this along. I mean, I'm probably gonna do it, but also not going to be on this board, you know, after this meeting. So maybe we could have someone else, even a non-voting member, make a motion that I could so move. Perhaps they could say, I could say so.
Can I? Are we moving on to the next one? Cause I, I do have a comment.
Go for it.
Um, so. I prefer not to make a motion or, or second a motion. I'm okay with voting if there's a good group. But one thing that I, I would like to put out there in terms of what I care about, and this has been pretty clear from the beginning, I think, and that is, I think diversity matters, and I think people who have a connection to the community that are, that are pretty long-term is helpful. And so as we look at the candidates, I know Michael fits into that category. I'm sure there are probably others. I'm not familiar with how long everyone's been in the community, but those are things that are, I think are important considerations. I don't, I don't think that I have, um, a negative reaction to anyone who's applied, and I appreciate everyone applying. But I'll put that in as my two cents in terms of, as we move this conversation forward.
I, I think my recommendation process wise would be if each of the voting members, um, of these five would maybe, and we don't have to, these people don't want to, but we just share of despite who they would support. And then we can kind of tally that in a public fashion, and I think that could guide motion making possibly. That'd be my recommendation. But.
Yeah, I'm just showing parts at least. Okay, I want to, I'll say that I'll narrow mine down. I want to take Shaylee off because, and just say that because she can share the seat. With Lacey. So I think like.
So who, which candidates are you in?
So that I'm in support of, uh, Melissa.
Okay.
Carolyn and Brad.
Okay. I'm just gonna keep going down the line and then.
Now that I'm not supporting the others, it's just those are my topics.
Yeah.
August, would you entertain a comment before? I'd just say I, I think that Carolyn's experience working in transitional economies that are specifically going from one dominant economy, you know, economic base to another is particularly relevant, especially given her expertise, looking at things like, you know, energy as a sector, that's an area that we've had, you know, some interest expressed around uh, development in those areas. So I think that's a very distinct perspective that will be helpful. Um, and then Brad, I know you've had deep experience in economic development as well, and I imagine have similar experience, but we're not just working on the, um, fundamentals right now. We are in a position of transition, and I think people who can draw from personal experience, working on similar problems will be a major benefit to the county.
Hey, John, can you expand a little bit more? Cause it was actually unclear to me, um, Carolyn, like, I guess, um, I don't know if there's, I tried to look at her application. I don't use a lot of information on the application in terms of like her background. Um, and I got the, the energy efficiency side, but that did feel more sustainable, sustainability. Kind of like, like it was like a, like, seemed like that was more of her background, but did she did kind of mention at the end that there was more of this like traditional economy? Like more economic development type work that she did. So can you just like, maybe give it a few sentences more on like her, like, like, I don't understand.
Yeah. So based off of what she described in her application, um, and I've met her once before, so I've heard her explain her background and the, um, how do you create, uh, growth in the workforce and a more sustainable workforce by leaning into sustainable energy as a economic driver, um, is an area that I, she's focused on. So as we transition to a more, you know, the like green infrastructure type economic changes that we're going to be seeing in our country and potentially in our region over the next several years, how do you use that as a lever for growth that benefits wage workers essentially?
Yeah.
I, my understanding of her, uh, uh, some, some portion of her background, I don't, I can't speak to all of it, but that part is particularly interesting.
She, did she apply for the sustainability job when that, when it was available? Carly? No, I'm just kidding.
I don't know.
Uh, Karen, um, asked, the five that have been brought up are Melissa, Carolyn, Brad, Shaylee and Michael.
There was a message in the chat too.
I think that's what Karen's message felt right up. But can't a non-voting member make, like, like make them, like, like they can offer a motion, right?
I, they could probably say what they'd like a motion to look like, but I don't think they can actually make it.
You, you do it and I'll, I'll make it a reality.
Well, make your voice heard. Listen, I, I. Um, the, if anybody, if any of the other voting members want to clear, clarify of those five who they would support, I think that would help us move along. Um, Forrest or, or Karen or Kelly or Brad, if any of you would be interested in doing that, don't have to obviously, but. Um, as.
I'll, I'll weigh in.
Okay.
I, if I were to make a motion, it would be to make this position a three-person job share.
Great, love it.
I'm sure that that's not the solution, but.
Who's the three?
Huh?
Who's that three?
I'm not gonna tell you.
Okay.
But, but, um, but at this point, I, I, I'm persuaded by Kelly's comments about long, um, being in the community a long time. Um, and Melissa's comments about diversifying the board itself with different perspectives. Um, I think Michael brings all of those things, even if he wasn't who he is. Meaning that the things that create the world that you're inhabiting, um, is less important than the things you do in the community and how you've seen this community over time. So, um, I would put Michael and Melissa on the list.
Okay.
Um, I think that, um, the entrepreneurial experiences that Michael has, the breadth and depth of his prior volunteer work has introduced him to many sections of our community. Um, and I was really impressed with Melissa's, um, strategy emphasis, um, especially revenue strategy. Um, so, um, at this point, I would put the two of them as my top.
Okay.
But I am also persuaded by Emily's comments about what Carolyn could bring to us. Um, I feel that not having the chance to ask at least one question more specifically of each candidate limits us because as I read, um, Carolyn's, um, which I'd read before, but I go back and reread, you know, the, the background that she's had on rural communities transitioning from extractive to other economies was interesting. Um, and and I think Brad has the finance and startup experience, and even if he wasn't an angel investor, would make great contributions to the board. Um, but if we're, since we're pressed to come up with one name, I've put two out there. Um, with the greatest admiration for what, what you do, um, and, uh, in exchange, I'll give you a personally guided tour of the museum.
I, I appreciate your candidness, Forrest. Um, Karen, do you have any thoughts to, to offer to this, your conversation?
Um, well.
So I was assuming you were gonna say something, but.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, aside from the motion that I made earlier, um, I also would, uh, I, I and I'm gonna pronounce it wrong. It's not Melissa, it's Elissa. How, how do you?
You wanna say it again? Melissa.
A Lisa, yes, um.
A Lisa with an M.
Oh, mm, mm, okay. L, L.
Lisa.
Lisa, yes. I'll get it. I'll be, I'll, I'll get it. Um, but, uh, yeah, I thought she had, you know, good, uh, Michael is still on my list and, and, um, so is she. So the good experience, a lot of enthusiasm to help the community. So that's where I'm at.
Cool. Uh, Kelly or Brad, in your, in your unique positions that you're in, you have any input on, on this?
I, I. I would support any of the candidates. I really would. Um, I think my, I think Michael and Brad both have ties to the community. I, everyone has ties to the community. I, I will support any of the candidates, and I know that's a very unhelpful answer, but I didn't watch the interviews, so. And I apologize for not looking at the videos. Should have thought about that.
Thank you, Kelly. Um, Brad, do you have anything that you wanted to add?
In the, uh, for fear of, of biasing one way or the other, I think I probably ought not to.
Okay.
You know? Cause I, you know, all the candidates. Uh, I'm just impressed with the number of people that you got to apply for the positions and their diverse backgrounds and quality. This is, that's great.
Awesome. Okay, thank you for that. Maybe I'll just reiterate what everyone shared. Awesome. Okay, thank you for that. Maybe I'll just reiterate what everyone shared, and then that can inform them. Unless you want to be a motion maker?
I still, you already, no, everyone just said.
Okay. Are you making a motion?
I mean, like, am I really gonna, I'll, I'm not even gonna be here, but I'll do it, um. Yeah, okay, um. You know, uh, I, 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 it's hard with limited information, um, but with limited information that I have. Um, I'd say, um, well, I'd just say to Brad that, like, you know, I think you're a good person, you've been a good person on this board. Um, but with that said, I think, like, part of the reason why, you know, I'm not on this board, going to be on this board in the future is, I feel like. You know, share the wealth and like, let the people kind of like have a seat at the table. Um, and we we've already have the contacts, you have the contacts, other contacts that we can still be influenced, so. I like Melissa, I'll make a motion for Melissa, and I'll do that. I guess I'll just do that, and then I'll give my reasoning in the discussion if you want. So I make a motion for Melissa.
Okay, so motion by Rob Walker for Melissa to to nominate Melissa Jeffers to be a member of public. Lives in Grand County, um, represented on the economic development advisory board. Do I have a second?
Kelly says she's not seconding anyone.
Awesome. All right, Brad seconds.
Oh.
Uh, motion by Rob, seconded by, um, Brad, any discussion?
Yeah, I guess I'd just say my, you know, a little bit, that was, I I've never met her before today, um. I looked through her, uh, LinkedIn while she was talking briefly, um, and, uh, very impressed with a lot of different. Uh, leadership roles that she's had, and seems like she's newer than Moab, but, you know, been in Utah, and, um. Seems like she'll be able to provide, uh, like a fresh perspective, and seems to seem really enthusiastic, and. So, um. Yeah, that was, that was my logic.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Uh, well, Kelly, you do have to vote on this one, it sounds like, um, unless Brad wants to vote, but, uh. I I call for a vote on the motion, on favor. Hey, we got that.
Said I support anybody.
Okay, that's a motion of two, which is not a majority of the votes, so the motion does not pass.
Okay, I'll keep this rolling here, guys, um. I will make a motion to appoint Brad. To the board.
Okay, motion by Rob Walker to nominate, uh, Brad Bertoc to be a member of public that lives in Grand County, representing. Representative on the economic development advisory board. Do I have a second?
I'll take it for it.
Okay, Forrest, second, motion by Rob, second by Forrest.
I think so.
Yeah, they're they're Rob's voting member, right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah. He's good, and your bylaws, your bylaws clearly state that the person will remain until replaced in the bylaws.
Thanks, Stephen. Um, okay, motion by Rob, seconded by Forrest, uh, all in favor. Three, we need four for a motion to carry.
I'll vote for myself.
Any vote?
And this.
I mean, by bylaws, okay.
I just wanted, I, you know, if you guys are truly undecided or or tied, you can just pass that on to the commission, it's just a recommendation.
I'll make, I'll make one more motion. Okay, that motion fails. Do you have same? Okay, motion fails. I'm gonna keep, well, I get paid by a motion, I don't know. Guys, how you make your money, but.
No, you only get paid for six.
And it's three minutes till the top of the hour, so.
I make a motion for to appoint Carolyn.
Hey, motion by Rob Walker to appoint, um, Carolyn Conant to. Be a member of the public that lives in Grand County, uh, as a representative on the economic development advisory board. Do I have a second?
We're done here. You'll take it from here, Kevin.
Okay, I mean, if no one, there's no more motions on this action item, we just move on.
Um, can I just make another motion, or, I mean, even though I made it before, so I'll make a motion to.
She, she, it has to be somebody else. The the motion needs to be made by somebody who didn't make the motion over yet. So if somebody else made the same motion for Michael List to be appointed, you can second that, but you can't be the originator of the motion.
Thanks, Stephen.
Karen, I don't know who you're going to move to appoint, but I'll second your most, your motion, so we can.
You have to make it.
Her, her, her original motion was to appoint Michael List. She can't remake the same motion because she lost.
Yeah.
So if you wanted to make that motion, you can theoretically make the motion.
Well, I will make the motion to appoint Michael List, assuming that's what you intended.
No, no, if you're gonna make the motion, just make the motion and put a period. Don't make it conditional on anything.
I move that we appoint Michael List to the Economic Development Advisory Board, period.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Uh, do I have any discussion before we vote here? Uh, all in favor of the motion? I see three votes. Forrest, Karen, Kelly, so the vote fails, are you, are you abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Okay.
I'll be consistent.
Vote fails. Okay, unless there's any other motions that we want to make, we basically leave this last one up to.
Yeah.
The commission.
Speak now. I think we tried, pretty much everybody.
Or the other option is you could bring it back when you have more more voting members.
Yeah.
If you think that that would change anything, or you could submit it to them with one recommendation.
Thanks, well, either way, the commission can do what they want.
Of course, they always can.
Yeah, okay. Uh, okay, I'm gonna move on to the next agenda item and probably just.
Just jumping in, I have to go, so the agenda item related to, um, some of the, uh, legislative follow-up. I just wanted to say, I think it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to look through the list of things that you guys requested and see if there's anything that the board members can help take on. If you don't get grant funding, because there's definitely some areas where I think I can, but I have to go get my son.
Um, I would probably entertain a motion, and and, uh, Stephen, can you clarify postponing or tabling for bringing agenda items to future meetings?
Uh, tabling is to bring it back later in the same meeting, postponing is to bring it up at a future meeting.
I would, I would probably entertain, given this by a quality, um, that we move to, um. Postpone the remaining, uh, agenda items, uh, today to a future meeting.
Do you need somebody?
I feel comfortable with that. I'll make that motion.
Okay, Kelly, Kelly makes that motion. Brad seconds.
Any discussion, like, are you sure it's cool? Because the summit's like March first.
Yes.
In March, I guess we don't.
I mean, we could also, we could also postpone, like, up to that, have a quick talk and.
Do we have to?
Just a discussion mode, so.
Yeah, that's what I meant, like, but I mean.
I'll, I'll amend my motion to postpone all the agenda items except for the brief discussion of the business summit.
Do I have to do that? Brad, okay, uh, discussion of that motion. Uh, all in favor?
Sure.
All right, unanimously. Okay, we'll, we'll move all those things to the next meeting, um. Yeah, so just basically what we wanted to talk about was, given this legislative context, and, you know, the fact that we're gonna be spending a lot of time focusing on. Uh. Uh, kind of basically supporting that lobbying effort in various ways. And the uncertainty of some of the diversification funded programming that we had had in talks, even though we're well under our way planning this summit, which is scheduled for March first. Um, it basically, we think we can pull, pull an event off. That more or less just kind of leaves the diversification-related funding programming to the side. Regardless, focuses on other, other issues, rural county grant funded priorities. Uh, you know, we have, I have a whole list of of things that we can cover, um, but I think wanted to get some impact, input on whether or not. Well, really, if 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 that's, if it's advisable to just postpone it to to later this year, when we have a certainty about the future of our programming. We won't really be able to have strategic planning kind of kickoff, because we won't be able to fund a strategic planner until we're done. The legislative session ends March third, two days after the the scheduled date.
Yeah, we should postpone it. You mean, you're saying, like, should we, should we consider postponing it?
That's what I'm asking.
Because it's gonna be super awkward, because like, a big part of what you're gonna be talking about would be like the Star Grant.
Well, that's, that's, I think, what what was, what we were thinking about. I I I think we could go either way. Um, I think there's a lot we could talk about that is going to happen, is generally a good conversation topic, is an opportunity to network.
Ooh.
Um, or, right, so, sorry, I interrupted you.
Yeah, you're good. I was gonna say, yeah, there's, there's definitely like, uh, so the other, so the question is kind of like, what's the strategy for us to ultimately like, kind of. Not have this TRT legislation like change, and so one thought would be that, you know, the obvious thing is let's wait until we have clarity to tell people. But actually, now I'm gonna go, I think it actually might make more sense to play a little more like, uh, offense, which is like, let's invite Governor Cox, he was there last time. Let's say, look at all the cool stuff we did, let's bring in, you know, Westside Woodworks, who's the biggest star grant, and be like, talk about what he's doing, talk about how he's expanding. I like, I think the, I like the idea of just like, this is what we're doing, and then if, if you're, if you want to take the punch bowl away and like, end the, end all this cool stuff we're doing, then it's gonna. You know, then you'll have to, you know, sort of say to everybody, sorry, but there's no Christmas for you anymore, you know, or there's, or these programs are not happening. I kind of like the idea. Continuing with it, um, and just, like, you're, you're obviously gonna have to spend time to, you know, work to lobby to, you know, work against it, but I mean, like. Right now, it's not a thing, and, um, I kind of, I think, I I think it'll increase our chances to, um, have support if we can. Address, you can dress it head on, you could say, I know there's been some criticism about different things we're doing, like, here's why we're doing all this, I think it gives you like a great platform, and. I mean, Kurt Curtis was there, Cox was there last year.
I I think that to that point, the date is two days before the end of the session, so I don't think it's going to necessarily lead into, and no legislators or governors are gonna. Leave the Capitol.
Exactly, that's the issue.
Oh, okay.
Not gonna have an impact up there. I mean, otherwise, I'd agree with you, right? If we could somehow. Complete our case, right, show the great things we're doing, and get that message really solidly to legislature. Um, I think that would be great, but I don't think we can. I think it'll be. It's just blocking and tackling the last two days, and so you need to, you know, you know, what would be better is to take your, uh. Uh, your project and all the little kids and go up and sit in the rotunda. And say, we have childcare now because of this program.
Yeah, I think my, I think my, my, yeah, my argument in favor would be. That there's a lot that we can talk about and engage, and engage in a productive space. That isn't so tied to like this particular, obviously, it's a big section of our funding, and a big opportunity to to get stuff done, but I think that. Generally, it's an opportunity, also just to clarify what are the goals and strategies, and and I think that, for me, set the tone. Of how we should be having this conversation, because right now it's really not all that. Like cohesive, right? There's people who are on one side and the other side, and a lot of people in the middle who don't have a place to have a conversation. And I think that for me, what I would like to do, even if we don't have a planner in place and like a process ready, even if we don't have. Um, you know, programs that we can shoot out of a cannon the next day and announce them, I think that we can clarify, for me, like. Here is where our department's general vision is. Okay, Star Grant, we want to move towards a more cohesive. Uh, economic business development ecosystem that includes technical assistance, financing, and additional work space. However, we fund that, we need to figure out, uh, you know, our childcare is a priority, our housing is a priority. Hear all these things and have subject matter conversation and experts come in and kind of like. I I think almost tee off whatever happened at the end of the legislative session regardless, because we're still gonna have funding from rural county grant. Smaller, sure. I, I, I.
Still an economy.
Yeah, so I think, exactly, so I think for me, my, I put butt on this, part of me is like, it would be great, because who knows, maybe the bill goes to committee like. The day of the summit, and I have to go there and not be the thing, but I think that, like, Ben would be there, we have great economic, we have event planners that are doing this. So, so I, I wanted to, I think my initially is, I was like, this would be great for me to procrastinate on this and put this off, so I don't have to worry about this till next month. But I think on the flip side, I think it's an opportunity to like. Demonstrate and bring together a positive and hopeful conversation about things that we can all agree on regardless of. Well, this is a session, no, you know, actually, I'm, I'm thinking the more that I thought about it, that I think I want to proceed with this. And.
Okay, so let's proceed with it.
What? I just want to keep that, I want to, no, no, no motion, no, this is us collecting feedback.
And if we, if we have a better idea of where we're gonna be two days before the end of session. We have a list of all legislators, everybody that sat that meeting, we say, this is what's gonna happen, this bill is going forward. You need to get and call everybody in the next twenty-four hours.
I mean, like, I think too, like, I mean, I'm gonna figure out the dates, the right ones in terms of the most like thing for the buck, but like, there's gonna be presentations, there's gonna be slide decks, just. We can have a Zoom link, like, I I would think that, you know, those legislators that, you know, Kurt, you know, Curtis and Cox, you could definitely like follow up and say, here's presentation, like, I know this is. Like, you could, I don't know, maybe we should be moving it up, I mean, a week or something, and you think that's more effective, like, just that they're, even they're not there in person, it's still. You know, I guess they'll see, um.
Yeah.
Some highlights or something like that.
Oh. Currently scheduled for Wednesday, March first.
And then we have, and you hired people to help you with it, right? So it's not gonna be a ton, because I mean, obviously.
We had to figure out programming speakers and. How it's gonna happen, we're not, we're, our time isn't gonna be taken up with picking the food and the thing.
Moving it so that you can get a better program, and because you're not comfortable with where you are, and you're not comfortable with your publicity, is one thing, and that's fine.
Yeah.
Otherwise, if you want to get it done, that's fine too, so just kind of.
Well, and if they're busy with, yeah, yeah, the other thing Brad was like, I'm, I'm, I'll ask is like, is, are they, um. Are, like, if you do this and keep the date the way it is, is that gonna negatively impact your ability to like lobby against this issue?
Yes, I agree with that.
Yeah, and I think that. I I'll be able to do it, it'll be a little stressful, but like. So I think, I think.
I wonder if he's too late to get his bill even written, if you consider.
They can put a bill the last day of the session.
It, he put three in in the past week. It doesn't take that long.
I I think that where where I'm at, like, I I just wanted to get feedback and have a conversation about this, because it's just been me and Ben.
Is there, is there any advantage to getting to to to, I mean, I like, I like, like, like I just said, what I said in the beginning, but it sounds like that's actually not a realistic, like, actual move. It's not gonna, it's not gonna help, so risk reward here, I don't, what's the reward then for for keeping it the same date, because the risk is that. It's extra stress for you guys, uh, for, that there's no reward, then what's the, because there's this new thing in your job that now came up, which is like. You have to deal with this all hands situation.
Yeah, I think the reward is that, it's probably the tenth year, this has happened, it's always been in February, March-ish. You know, really, the value of these things is conversations outside of the sessions, the networking, the opportunity to check in. Have a conversation with folks that are usually too busy running their businesses to. To be in these rooms and and have a conversation outside of the chambers or city council to to. Connect, and I think for us, it's an internal community conversation that we're starting and continuing, um, even if. There's these politically contentious things that I think people in our community do disagree on ultimately, um.
But 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 why does it have to be, like, but you haven't sent out the date yet to people, right?
We've kind of saved the date, but we haven't really aggressively marketed it.
We had five tickets.
Yeah, so we can decide, like.
But we have, our sponsors are right.
Why, why not just move it like a month later, or a few weeks later?
The reason it's the date that it is is because. Kind of, end of March on, people are too busy running their businesses.
Oh, yeah.
So really, the only, so it's either now, end of the season, or like, in the middle of the summer.
Is that, yeah, is that really true, though? Because, I mean, it's, so it's a day, right? It's one day.
No, but I'll tell you, when you have spring, spring break is coming up, and then you go the next week right into Jeep Safari.
The other time I would suggest, it'd be like, and like, late summer, but then everyone's on vacation, and then, or end of the season, like November, and then everybody's like.
Now, you're.
Turning off and going.
You're almost pushing it a year.
Yeah, I I I think.
Value, I think there's still value in having it when you're having it, not knowing even what might happen, because some of these people could be the people that help you find the solutions.
Yeah, totally.
We no longer have the same programs and funding available, because these are people in the community that might help solve some of those problems.
Yeah, and you, and you could like, definitely like deputize, be like us or whatever, if you want to be like, like, I'm, like, I'm gonna come to you with a pitch for. You know, like a childcare related, like, 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 you know, breakout session or a presentation, and, you know, or you could say like, hey, you know, can you, you know. Moderate X, Y, Z thing, or, you know, because, yeah, I I think, want to make sure that, you know, that your guys' time is prioritized. On like the most impactful thing, which, I mean, this is impactful, but the TRT stuff, there might not be much you can do on TRT, though. Right? It might, it might be a little wheel, wheel spinning, um, seeing what waiting for.
Practice might.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's, yeah, I mean, just.
Okay, Kelly, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, if you're looking for speakers, if you'd like to have the commissioner of apprentices, apprenticeship.
Yeah, if you're looking for speakers, if you'd like to have the commissioner of apprentices, apprenticeship coming, come down, we might be able to arrange that. I know there's been some interest in apprenticeship in the community and that would be an easy, completely free kind of thing. And I'm happy to work on that if you'd like.
So I'll just throw out three things we're thinking about, and I think that I, I'm generally in favor of moving forward. I think. Basically, starting tomorrow, we're gonna really aggressively get the marketing going, because we have everything sorted out, but we haven't really made the big push. Um, but, you know, so, so. Starting off really focusing on facilitating kind of positive, um, community oriented planning, where we all kind of have an opportunity to communicate with each other. Founded on like principles of, of mutual respect and, and recognizing that we have different opinions, right, from personal person in this town. Having a key keynote who, who has that kind of facilitator mediator background to really emphasize that that's an exciting. Uh, you know, the tenor of the conversation, examples of other really good, uh, kind of economic downtown development planning processes. We've got local folks who have talked about discussing B Corps operational efficiency, uh, trying to understand how we can expand commercial and industrial space in the area. Uh, sessions on energy development, renewable energy development. Side of our departments, those kind of core infrastructure, uh, for economic development, childcare, housing, internet, et cetera. Um, and, uh, also resources available to businesses with the SBC, all of these other things. So I think that there's enough that we talked about that aren't necessarily, here's our, how we're gonna spend a million dollars.
Is there, is there any, uh, I'm not up to speed on it since it came to be that, you know. Grand County is an enterprise zone, basically.
Yeah.
Is there any value now, three years later, since the enterprise own legislation came out? For discussions by numbers, like, people still take advantage of that, or do they, are there things that they're, they don't even know they're gonna take advantage of if they, if they knew they would?
Yeah, I mean, if someone can speak to that.
Um, needed somebody, we could get, I could get somebody, yeah.
I think, but, so going forward, no motions required on this, but, you know, I, I think we're gonna, my decision is we're gonna do it. And, and, you know, I think that as we have materials to market it and spread it and get input for content. Please send me an email, this is thing we should cover, here's things I'd like to see and share with anybody that do it. Public business owners, um, we've spoken with the chamber, we've spoken with several entities about what they'd like to see in this event. Um, and, you know, it's, it's whatever the, the loss is on putting it on, we're gonna cover it through all county grant, uh, as, as discussed. Um, so, anyway, that's, I think we'll move forward, just like to know that we're gonna be asking the L to help us out.
Yeah, as I second Rob, anything you need, just get us called.
Yeah, it's fun event, man, like I, I can definitely, I can have slightly less fun and still have fun.
Okay, all right, uh, that is the rest of the agenda. We have not postponed to a future meeting. Um, and we will go ahead and join this meeting. Thank you so much, everybody. Uh, it is five sixteen.